All right, it's seven fifteen, a little late, but we're gonna start the Select Board Meeting of April eleventh, and we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna...
We're gonna hold off on the normal business that we start with tonight because we've got a very special person here who we're very psyched about. So we've got Nottingham School seventh grader Brayden Baer, and he's gonna speak to us tonight in advance of the three-hundredth committee plans for reading the town charter, which is on May fifteenth. Excellent, you brought your own sign.
Turn around, please, sit down, turn around this way, and I'll get a picture with those guys in the background. So hopefully we can get their paint job when they agree or want to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The mic photogenic.
Yeah, so the Nottingham School Summer Institute created a time capsule, and it's gonna be buried next to the flagpole in front of this town hall right on Sunday, May fifteenth, and then that's gonna be followed by the reading of the town's charter, which is right behind me, and that's gonna be in the afternoon on Nottingham Square. So Brayden has come tonight to talk to us about the project and what's been done, and I'm very excited. So go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Selectmen. My, sorry. My name is Brayden Baer, and I was a member of the two thousand twenty-one Nottingham Summer Institute Fall Edition. I was one of four kids alongside Mrs. Breslin Dawson, Ms. Henderson, fourth grader Noah Santry Merrill, fourth grader Stephen Bullard, and fifth grader Riley Cludier. This was my second year joining the Summer Institute, and I was really excited to join once again. Tonight, I'm here to tell you about what we have been doing over the duration of the Summer Institute Fall Edition. Our first project was finding and putting things in a time capsule that will be displayed and buried on May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We all had amazing ideas and decided upon pictures. We all took time to go to some important places in our town. Some of the photos include Nottingham School, the fire department, both old and new, the rec center and their fields, Demmon's Old Country Store, Lyra's Paradise, and the Nottingham Art Projects that were displayed at this year's Steerfield Fair. We have more. We wanted to show that, we wanted to show the people in twenty-five years what was Nottingham in the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. I collected the pictures from the team, and then I sent them via iMessage to Ms. Henderson, and she printed them at Walgreens and put them into an album. Also, we have written letters which will be read in twenty-five years. When the time capsule opens, in doing this, we need to think of what technology we will have in the future, and we decided on photographs and paper. Another project we completed was to create a collage of favorites. First, we chose a piece of paper that has an outline of the Nottingham map in the middle. Next, we went on Google Images and searched for our favorite type of music, drink, food, movie, just to name a few. Then, we copied and pasted our pictures into Google Docs and printed them. Finally, we cut the images out and glued them to the paper, and we had a heading that said collage of favorites. Also, we finished making our T-shirts for the Summer Institute Fall Edition. All of us are pitching in to create our T-shirt design. We all found our icons that represent the town and the coronavirus pandemic. When they finished finding their pictures, they shared them with me, and I printed them out. After that, we cut the photos and we will, we put them where to put them on the T-shirt. One of the photos that we used was created by me. I took the Nottingham seal and added a green three to make a three-hundred, but with the Nottingham seal as the zeros.
That's awesome.
Yes.
That's great.
We are hoping to put our T-shirt in the time capsule, and this is our T-shirt design.
Very cool.
All of us pitched in to create them.
Nice.
During one of our meetings, Mrs. Breslin Dawson gave us nameplates that have our name on the top, and underneath it says Tricentennial Junior Board of Directors. After we were awarded our nameplates, we took a picture with Mrs. BD, Ms. Henderson, and Mr. Sousa, who's the principal of Nottingham School, with our new nameplates, and Mrs. BD and Ms. Henderson's nameplates from when they taught at Nottingham School. Since then, we have been using them during every meeting, and now present you with my nameplate.
I love it.
So much nicer than ours.
Yeah, it's nicer than ours. That's awesome.
Showing us up here.
Exactly.
Hey, Chris, you know.
Yeah, sorry.
It's not on the budget.
Other projects that we have been doing over the duration, we're working on researching significant headlines such as the COVID pandemic, the twentieth anniversary of the tragic attacks of September eleventh, and so on and so forth. We've also looking at current prices of things and scientific advancements. On our last session, which was on December sixteenth, we had a potluck party where everyone brought healthy food. I pitched in, made cookies for everyone, and it was such a fun time. Before I finish, I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for letting me speak tonight. Also, thank you so much to Mrs. Breslin Dawson and Ms. Henderson for making the Summer Institute Fall Edition happen. Thank you for listening, and I hope you have a good night.
Hey, so I got a couple of questions for you.
Of course.
This is so cool. So you mentioned that some of the folks wrote letters.
Yes.
And they're going in the time capsule?
Yes, so we have written like our letters to ourselves. I sadly forgot to bring mine tonight, 'cause, and, I was gonna say, oh yeah. So we wrote letters to ourselves and like what, how COVID has impacted us, what we wanna do in fifteen years, what are we now, and yeah.
So you'll come back then and read it, and you'll be like, oh man, I can't believe that.
Yeah, like wow.
That's cool.
This is what thirteen-year-old Brayden thought about.
So that was so much, you guys did so much. What was your favorite part about doing it?
Oh wow, I have to say, working with the folks and everyone has been truly amazing. Walking into every session has been really fun, and just have to say that this is going to be one of the greatest years of Nottingham School history for me.
That's awesome. Questions?
I think it's your mother with you?
Yep, that's my mom.
You should be very proud of your son. That was a really very nice presentation, you know, from somebody his age and stuff like that for us.
Yes.
He did an excellent job.
Very impressive.
Very happy that you're on that committee doing this for the town.
Yes. Thank you guys so much for having me.
Why don't you come up here and have a picture taken with the three of us for Steve? Yeah, bring the T-shirt.
Go around, come around the back here and get it right there.
Yeah, come around the back this way. Come right over here.
Yeah, right over there. I'm gonna get in the back.
Come on, right there. Very cool. Nice job.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Brayden.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, thanks for your patience.
Waiting for us to get started.
You're clearly, clearly the best part of this meeting.
Yes.
So we'll, we'll see you on the fifteenth.
See you on the fifteenth.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
All right, welcome, Tony. Did you have a fun relaxing trip home?
Did you get pulled over on getting here in a hurry, or?
No, no, I, I know we're on the cop side, so.
No, no, no. Okay, manifest and payroll, everybody look at those?
Yes.
Do you wanna, do you wanna act on them, or?
No, I'm, I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of April fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and the payroll manifest of April fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Right.
Minutes?
Were there corrections to those?
Yeah, okay, amended.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, April fourth, two thousand twenty-two, as amended.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, boards and committees.
We had a budget meeting, special election, special appointment for a member due to the fact of the missing status of that person on the town ballot during election. So we had a nice two-hour discussion about how to handle the situation, and we are now awaiting the state to give us written authorization and written direction of how we can handle this without having any sorts of recourse or lawsuit brought against the town for doing it in the wrong manner. So it took two hours to discuss that last Thursday night, and we have a tentative meeting for this Thursday, but that is all tentative on the fact of getting the written letter and proper authorization for how to handle the situation. There was a lot of discussion in that minutes or, in that meeting, it was all public about appointing people, and we had three people that want to sit on the one open position. So we had a nice meeting with three candidates that were all very qualified, you know, and all brought good points and good things, so it'll be a nice discussion when we find out exactly how we're gonna handle appointing whoever to the position, I mean, on the budget committee.
Darren, could you clarify what, what was the problem was?
The problem was disagreement between having somebody that ran for a three-year position but didn't win, but had a large number of votes, to the fact of the position we were, that was available, was a one-year position, or a two-year position, and no one ran for that position. So some people thought that we should automatically just appoint the people who had the most votes on the third, and then other people had a disagreement because he didn't actually run for the two-year position. So there was a back and forth, and then, you know, that led to the discussion of who and how we appoint and the situation. And in all my years of sitting here and being in public office for the lovely town of Nottingham and doing this, I've never seen people ask to be on the budget committee.
Seriously?
So it was a nice show of people that wanna come out and join the town and do stuff for the town. It was great to see three people having interest. Again, not common, so, not common at all, but it was very nice to see the three good candidates. So it's gonna be a tough decision for the board when it comes down to however we, however it's decided we have to make that decision.
Okay, fun times.
Yep, so stay tuned. We'll see what happens at the next meeting.
You have no, right, okay. The only other one is, so Marston, the team has been doing an excellent job. They just kinda did another big push for fundraising and got some great sponsors, really good job. We now believe we have enough for the, you know, we had money for the backstops. We believe now we have enough money for the side fencing and to complete the irrigation as well. So, nice stellar job by the team. So that's it on Marston. Town Administrator?
Not a lot for you. If you haven't seen this, this is the rec summer, summer and fall program guide, hot off the presses. It's time to start thinking about, you know, what the kids are gonna do for the summer and, and all that. Spring cleanup is Saturday. I know there's at least, there's the town beach, and there's a couple other sites that recs got lined up. Anybody that's interested in helping out, Saturday morning.
I know she needs handyman help with, she's got materials to repair the shed.
Shed at the beach.
At the beach.
Yep.
But.
Need some handymen.
Need some hammers.
Or handy gals.
Handy, yes, handy people, crafty, yeah, with hammers and drill guns, what have you.
The fire department's forestry truck's got a blown head gasket.
How old is that truck?
I think it's a thirteen. It's got about forty thousand miles on it. It's not, not what we would have hoped for, for, given the life of it, but the, you know, the cost to replace it probably approaches six figures with all the stuff that goes with it, so headed for repair on the head gasket in all likelihood. Can't live without it, so Chief thinks he can finagle it in the budget with his other stuff.
They did a nice job on this.
Yeah, that thing's, that thing looks great.
They did a great job.
Yep. Reminder that Friday, the new solar exemption that was adopted by the voters at town meeting, the deadline to apply for that exemption is Friday. We've got a, you have a whole pile of stuff. I think you skipped over assessing in your agenda. You have...
No, not yet.
Oh, is that, that comes after me?
Yep.
Okay. You've got a bunch there related to that. The, today I sent you a little write-up on one piece of legislation. You, you can get buried in stuff about legislation this time of year. We're, we're in, the halfway point of the legislative season's kinda nutty, and, and I don't bring much to you, but one, one item deals with the state retirement system. The House has passed something that would restart the state contributing to the state retirement system that they bailed out of ten years ago during the last financial crisis. Not a huge number, but getting back in the game of paying a portion of what would otherwise, what are otherwise our, our costs for police and fire retirement. So if you're interested in chasing that, I sent you an email with a little thing. There's one, one thing you can do quickly is, is sign on and show your support for it electronically. That's in the thing I sent you, but that would actually turn into real money for us. I didn't do detailed math, but it's, it's probably forty or fifty grand or something like that to us on an annual basis.
Yeah.
And perhaps just as importantly, gets the state back into the business of, you know, paying for a portion of that stuff, which was always part of the bargain from decades ago. And lastly, at some point, it doesn't have to be right now, but I'd like to talk E nine-one-one with you at some point in the evening. And that's all I, oh, here's, here's Chief. Two thousand five, the forestry truck, twenty-seven thousand miles. So Chief is watching.
Twenty-seven thousand miles?
Yeah.
Do I have to do a truck?
Blown head gasket.
Oh, okay.
Chief can talk to you about Ford versus Chevy and Dodge at length, I suspect, but more eloquently than I.
Okay, do you guys have any questions for Chris?
No, all right. I did read the, the background on that legislation, and I definitely think we ought to chase after that.
Yep, yep. Okay, assessing.
I'll make a motion, Select Board, approve the veterans' credit for map eight, lot seven dash three, and map sixty-three, lot four.
Oh, I'm sorry, I saw that. I was reading the other things.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion, the Select Board, approve the shiny brand-new solar exemptions for map forty-four, lot ten, map one, lot seventy, map nine, lot seven dash seventeen, map twenty-three, lot ten, map forty-four, lot six dash two, map twenty-three, lot ten dash eight, map thirteen, lot ten dash C, map forty-four, lot two dash thirteen, map four, lot five dash three, and map forty-two, lot nineteen dash six.
I will second that.
All in favor? Okay. General business. Do we need to talk about these? Conservation, member vacancies, Sue Mooney and Cheryl Smith?
Yeah, those are, we, I think we uncovered a, an appointment gap where we hadn't formally appointed and sworn people as everybody thought we had, so no harm, no foul, but need to get them accurate on the books.
So we just need a motion to appoint both of them?
And probably signatures on those forms, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Do you need a motion to reassign the forms?
What's that?
Do you need a motion to reassign the forms?
We need a motion.
Yeah, do a motion, just because it's an appointment.
We're gonna do your point two.
Conservation Commission.
I'll make a motion that Select Board approve the appointment of Sue Mooney to the Conservation Commission, and also the appointment of Cheryl Smith to the Conservation Commission, both for the period of March two thousand twenty-two to March two thousand twenty-three.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, general business. One thing I just wanted to raise, Chris, was I, you also, I think, we got emails from some folks in the PLIA today asking about herbicide treatments that are gonna be done by the electric companies, and so there was some concern expressed, well, wanting more details on what they're gonna be doing and concern expressed about the impact on the lake. I forwarded it to Dale.
Okay.
To take a look at it, and he said he was gonna look into it, but I just wanted to put that out there, and if there's any information or insight that you have that can be shared, that would be great, too.
Okay, yeah, we've got, on the front page of the town website is the, is a version of the notification, you know, the notification that we got. That may be where people saw it, or they may have received something in the mail directly.
Yep, saw that, but I think they're looking for more details on when and where.
Oh, okay. We will see if we can figure that out.
Okay.
They probably won't commit too much. This is, this is, this is a real shotgun notice. It, it covers a wide area, multiple towns, probably.
It did, it, the notice did.
Yeah, so I don't, I can't promise you we'll get good information, but we'll see what we can find on when and where.
Okay. I know Pam reached out, Pam Kelly reached out to the electric company as well.
Yep, and that's the co-op, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, whatever you guys can find out.
Okay.
It would be good.
Maybe it'll help with the milfoil problem.
Bad joke.
What about the people from Massachusetts? We'll keep the people from Massachusetts out of the lake, too.
All right, let's move on to tax deed waivers.
Okay, so this, this is, this is really optional for you tonight. I told you two months ago that I would come back in two months with an update, and so that's why this is here. You don't have to do anything with it tonight, but just by way of update. We had two, two properties that I had asked for you to defer taking on, 'cause I, you know, we're just making contact with the owners, or the owners are making progress or what have you, and I've given you a written update on that. One is almost put to bed completely. We're late in the mortgage game, and I've been, I heard from that owner an hour ago, so that's moving along nicely, and I expect it to be resolved. The other one, I don't see moving toward resolution, and it's, I just put it back to you to ask if you wanna, what you wanna do with it.
So I have a question on that one.
Yep.
On the note you sent us, the three people listed, there's one to the primary owner, the gentleman, we'll just say that.
I don't, no, I think it's, I think it is not. I think it is, a woman is the deeded owner, if not two together.
Okay, but who's?
I've not been communicating with either of those two people. I've been communicating with a spouse, which is what you have the communications of.
Well, that was my idea. I was trying, I was trying to decipher who we were talking to, but I read that, you know, if that property was being used as a rental property, or if it was actually used as a primary residence.
My understanding it's primary residence.
Okay, well, that makes, that makes a difference.
Of course, yes. It would, you, you would have dealt with this much, much sooner if it were a rental property. We would not be as forgiving by your policy. Yep.
We've always had, I don't think we've ever, again, I could be staying corrected, but as long as I don't have been aware of our, our taxation policies in the town of Nottingham, that a primary residence is something that we will not take.
It's not something we've done. It's also not what your policy says, so.
So we're getting fractious.
Up to you.
Is that, I mean, I don't mean to make our tax collector jump through twelve thousand hoops and chase somebody around, or you either, but I mean, I don't know, what do you guys think? Anyone can't go around, well, I don't, I'm not gonna ever vote to take somebody's house if it's a private residence.
That's a difficult one.
Eventually, we will get the money if it's ten years down the road, or whatever happens. We have a tax deed to us, but just, I mean, we have a lien on it, don't we?
Yes, multiple, yes.
We have multiple liens on it, so we are gonna get paid no matter what. We're first to get paid if anything sells or happens.
Do you guys wanna act on this tonight, or do you wanna wait till we have a full board?
I don't think it's gonna change the way, but we can wait till.
Tony, what do you think? I'll be honest, I'm not sure what I think. You know, 'cause I, I tend to agree with you.
Yeah.
But I wanna think about it a little bit more, honestly.
Yeah, I'm kinda split on it, too. But maybe in the meantime, we, you know, take this, you know, extra time and try to get a commitment from the gang of them, one way or the other.
I've already been there, that's why I, that's why I'm back to you, where I'm, I'm out of tricks.
I mean, has the price of the house and the value of the house leveled? I mean, the value of the house and what they owe in taxes hasn't leveled it off evenly yet.
The, I, I can't speak to the value. I can tell you what the assessed values do done, but.
At that level, yeah.
Oh, no, no, no. We're still at a fraction of the, of the, the assessed or market value. Yeah, we're not in danger of being left out in the cold on this, but this is, your policy now has a dollar number in it. This is over that dollar amount, and that's why I'm, I'm here. No other reason than, than what your policy tells me to do. So we can, I can put it back to sleep, and it's fine.
I think I'd like to defer it to next meeting, if that's all right with you. I, I know your opinion's not gonna change.
No, no, I don't think it's gonna affect either my defer or not, so I'm sure.
Are you okay with that? We'll, we'll put it as an action item for next meeting.
And on a similar topic, the single biggest outstanding tax bill, the legacy that we've been working on for eight or ten years on two oh two, two houses in a little beachfront parcel that's been on the market for a couple of years, been through the planning board.
Zoning, lot line issue.
The zoning lot line, no, no, that is, is under contract to be sold.
Oh.
Good.
Great.
Not sold, it's under contract.
It's under contract.
So we're close. You've heard me say that before.
I'll support your argument. Okay, that is all we had for public tonight, unless there's anything else. Back to you, 'cause you forgot, or you missed it, just in the pile.
These are all done.
Yep, thank you.
E nine-one-one?
Oh, yeah, let's talk about that.
Yes, I think I updated you on most current news and need your guidance on where to go from here.
Well, I've been talking to people, so I mean, I'm ready for the public here for us to go to it. I've had a conversation on Saturday when we were at the weed program that the Lake Association put on, and I had a conversation with the residents there about the E nine-one situation, trying to get a feeling prepped for the inevitable number of house changes that might occur. So I think we're gonna get some backlash on it, but I think overall people are, are gonna be respectful for what we have to do.
Uh, yes, I think I, I updated you on most current news, uh, and need your guidance on where to go from here.
Well, I've been talking to people, so I mean, I'm ready for the public hearing, for us to go to it. I've had a conversation with, uh, on Saturday when we were at the weed program, uh, that the Lake Association put on, and our conversation with the residents there about the E-91 situation, trying to get a feel and prep for the, uh, inevitable number of house changes that might occur. Uh, so, I think we're gonna get some backlash on it, but I think overall, people are, are gonna be respectful for what we have to do. So, I'm ready for it. I mean, we have the public hearing, right? That's coming. Is that what you're looking for? I mean...
Well, yeah, I, um, you know, I, I sent you the fire chief's thoughts on it. You're up to speed on that. And the next step is, is, is a public hearing. We, we, we're at the point now where we have to publicize that public hearing, we got a space for it. We were actually, we're asking to use the school because what the E-911 folks tell us is that the turnouts tend to be humongous on the, on these. So, um, we are prepared to pull the trigger on that, but, um, pulled back.
But this board can make a decision at this point in time whether or not we wanna go forward and whether or not there is a public hearing.
Yeah, what, if, if you don't wanna go forward, we just need to know that, so we stop moving that way. Uh, if you wanna go to public hearing, you can make a decision later, that's okay, too.
Yep.
But we don't wanna do it for nothing, and we don't wanna do it, you know, if you've, if you've had a change of heart about it or whatever, then...
Well, I think giving the fire chief a change of heart on it makes it...
More difficult.
More difficult.
Yeah.
That probably don't work, as you said.
Uh, the, uh, the chief has, uh, said that he doesn't believe that the risks are significant enough to justify the, um, difficulties with the process of changing. That's, I think, a fair...
Yep.
Boiling down of his, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but...
I mean, I, I can't ignore the, you know, the, the ultimate benefit of it in the end game, but it, yeah, it's gonna be some grief and inconvenience for people, so... I'd, I'd, I'd be interested in, in having the public hearing just to see what people think, 'cause it's the people most likely to be affected that are gonna show up. So, I would certainly wanna hear what they had to say.
What do you think?
Again, I just, like you said, I know what the benefits that are gonna be there. It's something, you know, I, it's a lot of work for the town, a lot of work. We have to start numbering everybody that's gonna be, you know, done in frustration, but, you know, it's, I mean, all the new developments aren't gonna have to do anything. It's basically just the...
Nah. Nah. Not, not every, not, not, most, most people are gonna feel this. This is gonna, this is gonna affect...
Well, it's his...
Ninety-something percent of the town's street numbers will probably change.
Really?
We never anticipated that. I was thinking it was gonna be...
I didn't think ninety...
Twenty or thirty roads that might have to be numbered or whatever, not...
No, if you, if you look at the list of...
Seventy-five roads.
If you look at the list of problems, it's, it's most of the roads. The numbering, the numbering is...
Want to say nope?
Uh, yeah, you, you, you have the option of doing, you know, there's, there's particularly egregious problems that we have around a handful of...
Don't do this?
No, no. We have a handful of roads that are particularly egregious problems, given that they splinter all over the place, and there's, you know...
Oh, you have to name the roads.
You know, there's, there's seven different Lamprey Drives, you know, just, the, you know, those, we, we could tackle those without coming into compliance, without, you know, with the whole town. Uh, and, and where do you draw the line on, you know, what's critical now and what isn't? Is a, you know, a matter for discussion, but, um, there are definitely some that are more confusing than others.
I always took this as something that was more necessary for us to do.
And now?
At, at this point, changing everything in the whole town is, if I, about to be the exit, you know, extreme, excess burdened.
Uh, it's, it's absolutely a burden on lots of people, yeah.
I didn't expect the estimate to be that big. I expected maybe four hundred something homes or something maybe changed on, two thousand.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the list of road names and every, they have to be brought in, you can't, you can't just willy-nilly, you know, go fix one house because it has impacts up and down the street, right? So, um, so, no.
But we can fix the trouble, yeah, we can fix the trouble spots without going through, the real problem areas we can fix without going through this.
It would be a much smaller scale version of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, perhaps even with, uh, you know, the consent of the people that it affects, you know, without, you know, we, you could, we, our approach would be slightly different, but, uh, the process would end up being, same thing, just a lot smaller.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about going forward with it if we don't have the chief's support for it.
Right.
I wonder how he'd feel about a scaled-down effort.
Well, what he, he wrote that, um, you know, his concern is, is those, you know, targeted area, we haven't defined those targeted areas, but we all have a sense of what we're talking about.
That's right, he did say that.
Right.
I mean, in terms of, it, just, just looking at it through the lens of public safety, it's those, you know, splintered roads and, you know, roads that have almost the same name to them that, that create the most risk of a mistake.
Yep.
I mean, I, yeah, I would be happy with cleaning those up as opposed to, you know, renaming and numbering ninety percent of the town.
Yep, I agree with that.
Okay. So, I will, um, put a hold on the...
Yep.
Big process...
Yep.
And come back to you when we have a sense of what a smaller process would look like?
So, we're, we're saying, let's not go for the whole thing, but let's, on a smaller scale, outside of the scope of the whole E-911 thing, address the other trouble spots.
Sure.
Okay.
Very well.
Um, I, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Um, I just got an email from Ben apologizing for not, um, being here due to something that came up, but he also expressed a concern about the fact that we kind of got off schedule of what our every other Mondays used to be, and it's 'cause we threw in a couple of extra meetings along the way, and we are now meeting on a Monday where he has to work versus a Monday where he doesn't.
So, is, is like tonight's meeting the off meeting or the regular one?
Um, I think it would probably be the off because of the way...
The, this, you, you got a package of dates for the whole year?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, this is, this is part of that package. Last week's was an extra. But it, it could very well have shifted a week through holidays and whatnot. We're, we, our approach has been to dodge the Monday holidays as much as it has been to say, you know, lock into a, an alternative cycle, so we can, we can tweak it, whatever you, you know, however you wanna play it. Um, the Monday holidays, well, if we shift, I bet we bang into a whole bunch of Monday holidays, but we can figure it out, but it's, that's probably what's gonna happen. We're probably lined up with skipping a bunch of Monday holidays right now, but...
So, we, I just wanted to share that. We can talk about it next time with him and Tyler.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Yep. Okay, if there's nothing else, we can, uh, go into non-public under A.
Alright, I'll make a motion to select board enter non-public session per RSA 91-a, colon, three, section two A.
Second.
Roll call.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, John Moore.
Alright, we're gonna go into non-public. Um, after we come out of non-public, we will be adjourning the meeting. So, thank you for watching, chief, and, uh, have a good night.
Thank you for staying.